Try Grammarly for free by clicking the blue button. Class dismissed. Go on, download Grammarly today. Blue button. Right there, Grammarly. Oh yeah. Click it. And don't look at us. It's just a coach and a duck. It's alright, you click that blue button. Alright, you've seen it before, haven't you? Ooh, Grammarly, for the win.
What the... Yo, this is...
Hello? Hello?
Wow.
Hi!
Why?
Hi!
Okay. Hi baby.
Second.
Eat Coco, eat.
Yes.
Any water?
Yeah.
Get in there. So good.
I'd like to discuss two things related. One would be public discussion. We have it right now at the beginning of the meeting. If we could talk about that. Um, and then secondly, talking about amount of time for the discussion.
Uh, Demi, you need to shoot the arrow. I really want, I really want it.
He's gone!
Just to make sure that it's fair for everybody to get their points in. Um, so I'd like to discuss modifying that too, please.
We can, let's see. We can add that on the new business. When it ended up back because it's part of our policy that it is five minutes. We can discuss it and if we go back to policy. We can support.
What are you doing? Oh god!
I think actually there's two different things. But I'd like to propose, if you want me to propose, I think, but I'd like to propose for us to discuss is to put the public comment. But then we're voting on each item as we go through the meeting. The way the meeting is structured now and historically the number of reasons to have it. But I'd like to remove public comment or at least put it out there for discussion. Um, at the end of the meeting. And then, secondly, is to, you know, assuming we did that or we didn't do that when there is public comment, to discuss reducing it from five minutes to, and then we discuss it whether it's two minutes or three minutes. It's not uncommon to have it to two minutes. Get points if possible. Um, it makes the meeting more efficient and allows for you to ensure that everything is considered.
We had the public comment that we voted and made that provision. And even our policy, I know our policy says to be more.
Well, another one that was added, and then he's added, uh, the ditch will give people who are lost. But, uh, there weren't a lot of other reasons for it, so you might remember.
Yeah, well, I think part of it was, um, where we, um, had the motions at the end. We had the discussion all the way through. But, uh, that gave people which has to comment on the discussions.
But unless we have a consent agenda, that wouldn't be the case, right?
Well, it wasn't about the consent agenda, it was about the...
Henry! Are you kidding? Henry, no!
I'm fucking helping. You did it. You're helping. You're gonna pick us up one little kernel at a time. And you're gonna like it because I'm fucking fed up with your bullshit. I'm gonna be a horrible father one day because of you fucks.
Okay, so the reason for having that second, um, public comment was that we were, we were having our discussions during the meeting on each item. But we were not taking the vote on either item. People wanted to comment on the discussions that we had had before we actually had the vote on the items. So even though we have the votes as we go along. This video is gonna have to exercise. Thank you. Well, there's two distinct things. The first one is public comment. The second one is limited to public comment on an agenda item. So, a big difference here because if somebody wanted to comment about... Not be part of the curriculum. She wouldn't be able to get up and make public comments asking that question. So.
Come here. Come here. Who did that?
You know, we so often have no one here and we don't have to listen to anybody. That, I think, when they do show up, we owe it to them to listen to them.
It looks so fucking terrifying, bro! Come here! Hey, there's an intruder!
I think it doesn't happen often enough that it's something like we're never getting out of here. Last meeting, so I, I would not at this point in time want to cut back on this at all. Thank you.
Come here.
We all need the mic.
Yeah? Hey, no, no! No, hey, hey, no! Stop it!
First time, so the first public comment is the one that's open.
Mom, this is not funny!
How about somebody talking about anything that's on the agenda they could do in the first public comment? The only one that's limited is to the agenda.
You're fine!
I just want to make sure I'm correct on that. Because it's an important point you brought up. It's a flip flop. And I think. Am I correct on that?
Holy!
Well, and we were saying that, um, we don't very often have a lot of public comments. Once in a while there is something that's very important to a lot of people. And so I would, I would be in favor of...
Please guys, help me out!
Yo, Spunky, what are you doing, dog? You sniffing ass!
This is also the first, this is, in other words, this time suggested would maybe no doubt that the first public comment.
Run!
Right.
But then you...
Right.
It would, then they couldn't comment on the discussion that had been made on the agenda item. Because they wouldn't have been, the discussion wouldn't have been done yet.
But if they come to a meeting, does an idea in mind speak to their particular concern or to do that? Especially if they looked in the mirror.
Wake up, guys!
They'd have had that there for discussion.
Luna, I'm home!
Right, but if you wish them.
Here she comes.
Do you ever look at someone and wonder, what is going on inside their head?
Run!
I think that's fair to keep it at five if we only do one.
What?
Hi! Oh my god!
Wait a minute!
Second. Hi. Yeah, um, on the September report, forty-two confirmed cases while being exposed.
No! You get out!
I was there.
Searching for a better way to collaborate with your team? Try Miro, an online whiteboard made for teamwork. Everyone's welcome, from project managers to product managers, designers, developers, agile coaches, and consultants. Get the whole team together in real time on Miro's infinite canvas. Use your Miro board however you like. Online workshops and project planning or brainstorming and ideation sessions. There's a template tailor-made for your needs. Whether you're in the office, working with a fully remote global team, or catching up in your own time, working together is seamless. Miro is there whenever and wherever inspiration strikes to keep things moving. Interactive features help your team work as one with timers, sticky notes, voting, and of course, these guys. And the finishing touch, you can integrate the tools you're already using, making your Miro board the center of the universe. Join the millions of teams already on Miro and connect and collaborate in a new way. Sign up for free today.
Experience the ultimate expression of BMW when you combine 100 years of precision BMW engineering with the performance of M power. The Seven Series is cemented as one of the preeminent luxury sedans on the market with the finest of details and peerless craftsmanship. Experience the ultimate expressions of BMW at your local BMW center.
You guys have plenty of documentation. There's a whole bunch of documentation out there that show you that these masks are no good. And plus, you know, for you environmentalists, you know, at this point, you're polluting the planet even more so. You know, you think you're doing good on one hand, and on the other hand, you're doing bad. So, at this point, I hope that you would actually consider what I'm saying to you tonight about accepting Jesus Christ as your savior. Because I'm telling you this, this is the tip of the iceberg of what's to come. I mean, the very, very tip of the needle. From here on out, it's gonna get rougher.
Aubrey Friedman, I live in Bridgewater. I have two granddaughters, aged seven and four. And it's, sorry, comment is about masks again, but I'll...
Hello honey!
Mandatory.
What are you doing?
That any parent that wants their kids to wear the mask, they can do it. Nobody's stopping them. And by all means, they should do it if they feel that it keeps their kids and other kids safe. That's fine. And in fact, I know somebody who works at the Bridgewater Hebrew School. She herself is not a masked person, but she honors the wishes of the parents who want their kids to wear masks. And she reminds the adults, you know, wearing it under their chin, you gotta, you know, put it back on properly. So that's how it should be. She's honoring the wishes of the parents and not just what bureaucrats say. If that can be done without a mandate. And, um, since we're talking about mandate, I think the burden should be on those who are supporting the mandate for the masking. We want better proof and data. And when I hear things like, uh, all the public isn't fair, like, it's not good to do, it's not good to do, it's not good to do. It's just a fear, we need to date, it's not good to do, it's not good to do, it's not good to do.
Through your Kickstarter, Apple, Twitter, and Jack, they raised enough for seventeen new miles. And what does this mean, this link?
Oh, it means the world. It means a lot. That word on the air, but they know they're working to an hour. That the kids, that it's really beneficial overall and not to also not consider the downsides to it. Which we've talked about before, the breathing, they're wearing the dirty mask, they can't see the facial expression, all the stuff that's been talked about before. So the burden should be to prove that there's actually a benefit to it. Okay, now let's talk a little bit about what goes on in Europe. It's completely different attitude there. And they haven't been shy about safety. I mean, they had lockdowns and mandates and everything. In the UK, no mandates for kids in schools wearing the mask. Ireland, only if they're fourteen and older. Norway, they don't even advise masks.
I got you, Brady!
Rest of Scandinavia, no mandates. Austria, uh, the kids have to wear them in the halls.
Look at her! Look at her! Oh my god, look at Brady!
Italy, Spain, and France.
Good job!
You got something on your mouth there. Can I get it? No? What do you think?
Let's talk about transmission a little bit. Um, it's mostly occurring from staff to staff, then the next biggest group is student to staff, and the smallest group is student to student. So, um, so if there should be a mandate, maybe it should be the staff and the teachers should be wearing the mask, but why put it on the kids? Everybody knows the range is so low, it's like the flu, and actually kids are catching it more at home than their own family members at school. So, uh, I wanna read just a little, uh, somebody who's changed her mind. I'm okay on minutes. Do you have another minute? I think I do. Okay, um, her, uh, her name is Alyssa Scheckter-Purkins. She's actually the director of the Emergency Medical Management of Boston Medical Center. So I think she's, we should respect her opinion. This is what she has, this is a quote. It's a very short one here. "A year ago, I said, 'I'm not staying here, why?' And this is where I left."
Tiger versus tiger.
"We are down tight to mask children for this long with no known mandate and without any clear upside. I'm not aware of any studies that show conclusively that kids wearing masks in schools have any effect on their own morbidity or mortality or on the hospitalization or death rate in the community around them. And my last point is if you're really concerned about safety, maybe you should do something about the parking situation at the high school. Because I know a bus driver who drives for the school district, and he says when the kids get released, you know, in the middle of the day, he said it's a zoo there. There are no lines marked and the buses are coming, the kids are walking all over the place on the road, and it's actually dangerous. He's complaining, I guess nothing's been done. So if you're really concerned, a real safety issue, that's something we can worry about."
Leave it.
Hi, my name is Madison Lawson. I'm from Bristol. I'm speaking as a parent of two elementary age children concerned about mandated medical devices in public schools. Masks were designed to be used in controlled medical facilities and by trained medical professionals. There are extreme dangers in misusing them and so masks. When we send our children to school, we've put in trust with school staff to take care of our children. Our learning at school is the teacher and staff's job to protect our children to foster a safe environment for them to learn. Where teachers are not medically trained professionals, how are we expected to monitor safe mask usage?
Lucy, you need to be out of the toilet!
Are there resources in place to ensure children never touch their mask with unsanitized hands?
What are you doing, Lucy?
Are there extra staff in place to monitor children during mask break?
Lucy!
And to make sure their masks never touch unsanitized surfaces?
What are you doing in the toilet?
Are there procedures in place for teachers to check if masks are moist throughout the day? Are teacher and staff communicating with the students to make them feel safe and comfortable to speak up if they feel lightheaded or short of breath? If you're ripping our rights to choose whether to mask our children, then it is your responsibility to make sure also...
I'm gonna need you to not take my food, Lucy, no!
...who are qualified to enforce safe medical device practices and assume all responsibility for short and long-term adverse effects from mask use. All of the following information is cited from the ChildrenHealthDefense.org and the WHO website. Children and adolescents usually only take masks off when they notice that they can hardly breathe. A fatigue of respiratory musculature usually goes unnoticed. Also, due to the moral pressure exerted by social mechanisms, children and adolescents rarely take off the mask to... children and adolescents rarely take off the mask despite feeling unwell. Many cases have been documented where children have been told that they might be responsible for the death of another person if they do not put their mask on. Some teachers, being persons of authority, insist on wearing masks despite children's complaints about typical symptoms including headaches and nausea. That clearly indicates danger of the mask being used. Children could therefore undergo the psychological pressure which legally constitutes coercion. Consciously or unconsciously, not any symptoms of possible hypercapnia as a result of...
My Disney voice, I'm my finger.
Children aged five years and under should not require, be required to wear masks. This is based on safety and overall interest of the child and the capacity to approach their mask with minimal assistance. Children are advised, the decision to use masks for children six to 11 should be based on the following factors: Whether there is widespread transmission in the area, the ability of the child to safely and appropriately use the mask, access to mask, as well as laundering and replacement of masks midday in certain settings such as school and childcare services, adequate adult supervision and instructions to the child on how to put on and take off a mask safely, and the potential impact of wearing a mask on learning and psychosocial development in consequence of teachers' actions to give them a medical advice. In 2014, a report indicated that six masks were awarded in the United States. Testing and analysis of the contaminated panel of the mask after the outbreak, the results reported found that five masks were contaminated with bacteria parasites, fungi, including three with dangerous pathogenic and pneumonia-causing bacteria. Although the test is capable of detecting viruses such as SARS, only one virus was found on the mask, herpes virus one. Half of the masks were contaminated with one or more strains of pneumonia-causing bacteria. One-third were contaminated with one or more strains of meningitis-causing bacteria, and one-third were contaminated with dangerous antibiotic-resistant bacterial pathogens. The masks studied were new or freshly laundered before wearing, and had only been worn for five to eight hours. Most during in-person learning by children aged six to 11. One was worn by adults. A T-shirt was tested as a control. No pathogens were found on the children. However, said, you are assuming a mask's responsibility by forcing this mask to be used. Without the proper medical team staff and proper monitoring systems for improper mask usage, it is inevitable. The liability of our children getting sick from bacterial infections caused by contaminated or damp mask is great, and I hope that you all don't take it lightly. Please hear our concerns and allow parents to be responsible for making these serious decisions for our family. On top of all that...
Hi, I'm Deb Luton, I live in Alexandria. Been a taxpayer for 14 years, and I've always lived in this area. So I sent an email with this information to everyone. I hope you get a response, only from one person. So I'm not gonna bore you or the audience with all the information, but it does have to do with... Engineer McConaughey, he has an MBA. He's a senior research scientist, senior research engineer. He has testified in all kinds of different places. And he says, "The science shows COVID-19 virus particles are less than one micron"
Roto!
Which is 4,000 times smaller than the diameter of a single hair.
Give me Roto! Roto! Come over here, Eli. Watch, Willie.
In the stirrup.
My name is Erin Edwards, I am a resident...
Put it in there.
I'm a parent of two students at the high school, and I'm also a teacher at the middle school.
Alright, that was good.
Nobody likes wearing masks. The kids don't like wearing masks. The teachers don't like wearing masks. Nobody does. But we know it's for the greater good. And that's why kids are doing it. And I have to tell you, I don't hear any complaints. If the kids need to take a break, we are more than glad to give it to them and encourage it. So that's been since last year and this year too. So I've been really impressed by the kids in that way, not hearing complaints. And we just want to stay in school. Especially those of us at the middle school. We didn't get back last year until February. It was really hard. And the kids were really sad because we got pushed off a couple times. And just to see that reaction. So I, whatever it takes for us to maintain the situation that we have right now, staying in school, I think is really important. The other thing is that a gentleman commented before about bureaucrats making decisions. The state of New Hampshire requires kids to have a...
Chubs, that slippery dude.
So I think that there are safety measures in place for students, and I think it's important that we think about that as well. So if we're gonna require something like a vaccine for chickenpox, I think we need to have some things in place for COVID. I think it just makes sense. I also want to comment on the recent Facebook post by one of the school board members. He was really disappointed in the language that was used. "You people", and then there were comments made. It just found that incredibly condescending and not... Felt it was offensive, especially for the comments that went on.
Well, the other cat would definitely not work. He would exceed the weight limit. "You people", I just find that very condescending and rude. So I hope that we can keep it polite. Thank you.
I'm Cindy Young, Bristol, New Hampshire. I have a granddaughter. And I think any child and I think they'll do whatever it takes to be able to do that versus being locked at home for another year. I would. Some reality. COVID-19... The CDC has acknowledged that the testing, the test cycling that they do to pick up the virus is faulty, and it's creating false positives. So they're gonna change it, but not until the end of December. So your testing is picking up Corona. Corona is the common cold. We know that when kids get back to school, this is like a Petri dish, okay? They get flus, they get colds, they get sick. And you can't differentiate between the symptoms. So you, then you test them with this test that the cycle is inaccurate, and you end up with all these numbers. So I want you to be mindful of that. And there is proven scientific factual data that tells you about that.
Coco, code three. Protect the yard, code three. Go, Coco, go! Go!
What in the world are you doing? I want a tea. It's this silly little girl who crazy diapered my baby.
There's a couple of things I'd like to ask for, and I can leave my address, or I can send email...
Where's Gypsy?
...to respond to, because it's public input only.
It's a strong little horse, huh?
But you had adopted that state...
What happened, Vidka?
I'd like to see that policy. I'd also like to know if there's any funding at either the state or the federal level that looks for your mask mandates per student and allocates funds directly as a result of your mask mandate. And then for future discussion by the board, I'd like to hear a couple of things on critical race theory. That you have hazardous receptacles throughout the school for these masks that are gonna be contaminated all over the place. Thank you.
Brenda Joyce from Alexandria. And I figured this is a perfect follow-up to the woman in front of me here. As far as the PCR tests go, I have 30 pages right here. 268 different tests by different companies have now been rejected. It was already updated on September 25th. 268 PCR tests that are bogus. This is what you're basing masking my grandchildren on. That's number one. I'll pass that off to the board. Number two, the lies being told and the types of deception resulting in unfounded fear has been driven by the media besides the thousand-fold difference between children and adults getting sick. An example of a very recent publication states that cloth face masks become non-consequential and do not function after 20 minutes from just your breath contaminating. And now the demon lets that suppose... So unless you want to change these kids' masks every 30 minutes, they're doing that.
Callie? Say hi! Say hello!
Aren't ya? Are you stuck? Come on, come on, come on, there you go. Come on, there you go. You're stuck, aren't ya? You got yourself in a pickle there, don't you, boy?
Oh my god. Ay yi yi.
Oh my god. She's possessed! She's possessed!
Good evening, everyone. I'm Mary Mutiella. I'm a lifelong resident of the area of 1969 graduate of the Darnell National High School. And the changes I've seen through the years have not been good. With respect to the masks...
Yeah. She loves to give kisses. Sometimes she cleans. I don't know if you can, are they even...
Henry.
Oh my god, Henry Jeff did the link!
Eat it, eat it, come on.
It's so sour. It's out of my book.
Whoa.
You helping her? Lexi, good girl, you gonna help her? Lexi, that's a good girl. Come on, babe, come on. Come on. Lexi, good girl, Ellie, good girl.
Come on! Come on! Come on! Good girl!
Good girl, good girl, good girl, good girl. Oh, oh, daddy! Hey, what is that? Rowan does it now that...
I guess the guy next door...
Hello? Oh!
Mira esto. Comida está ahí. Comida.
No, I'm not eating.
Baja comida. Hey, good boy!
No. Head up. No. 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 No.
I'm putting in and it's being taken away from my life to what I'm here putting the effort into.
At the butt.
¿Eh, normal? ¿Normal, Alexa? ¿Tepulín que poddáis? ¿Tepulín que pochla?
For a dog, they go like this. And so he's gotta just barely tick it. When he does that, he can move forward. But he can nose it up to it.
Oh, he got it! I got it on video.
Can I get it?
Oh, I hope nobody finds me licking this because it tastes so good. I just don't want to share with anybody and I hope nobody finds me.
Be nice.
Be nice. Say hi Kitty.
Hi Kitty. Hi Daddy! Okay.
We don't need a remote option at this point, right? We're not going remote. What we need is our kids in school learning is to make up for the year that we lost. And the safest way to do that right now, based on the data... Where if not you, or you can sort of choose, then the masks don't work. So if you're gonna mask with all or nothing, and that's a decision you had to make. And that's a decision to make. Somebody who's an elected official for fifteen years, I understand what it takes to make those decisions. Not always the most popular ones to make. So I'm gonna go home, have dinner, I'll just find a gentleman to sit over here, and I commend you for that, and stay the course, thank you.
Sugar, I know you want that hot dog one. But concentrate, you gotta wait till I count to three, okay? Concentrate, wait for it. One, two, nine, ten, twelve, three. Good girl.
You wanna get out? You wanna get out?
Please to get closer so I can get to the deer.
All right, fine. Give me a... Give me a... Give me a...
Come on!
No, you're not playing with that.
Natural, huh? Facebook shows him up. He needs a quarter. He's out of money. Hi, Sammy. Hi, Sammy. Hi!
Poor baby, you're gonna scare me. Oh, I'm gonna be behind the cup! He got out! He got out! Mommy, he got out!
Is he getting you, Ava? Look, he's getting you. He's getting you. He's chasing her.
We could train surgeons everywhere to do it. Very as you are, one of the teleplastics are an intimidation, so I don't see whatever that is.
I'm a trial subject.
Leave it.
Stop!
Good boy, stay. Wait, don't step in front of it.
Shut up. You want to jump around? Picture. Okay, I got a gun. Click, click, bang! Bang! Bang, all the way.
Good Kitty! Here's the... Good Kitty!
Carter, he's bigger than you.
Yeah.
Come on.
This is from Mary with you. Hello, it's been a year since I've been here for the meeting this evening. I'm not going to attend, but wanted to report to my parents. Thank you for coming over to let our cat eat.
Happy birthday to me. Happy birthday to me. Happy birth- Paw. Thanks Jasper.
Inse. Take a look, honey.
Can you go downstairs? Hey!
My toy! They're not! Both!
Look at this distinguished gentleman. Look at the way he is sitting, yes, very distinguished. Mm-hmm, I see, I see.
Jackie, side seat, mother, sir, ma. Jackie. Ah! You're fine. No, I said don't jump on her.
They're not always so obvious. Some of them are very subtle. These little things that... That seem very innocent, but she's still thinking... that seem very innocent, but she's still thinking they're bad.
Hey, can you sit? Oh. There you go. You're stupid.
Looking for a better way to collaborate with your team? Try Miro, an online whiteboard made for teamwork. Everyone's welcome, from project managers to product managers, designers, developers, agile coaches, and consultants. Get the whole team together in real time on Miro's infinite canvas. Use your Miro board however you like. Online workshops and project planning, or brainstorming and ideation sessions. There's a template tailored made for your needs. Whether you're in the office, working with a fully remote global team, or catching up in your own time, working together is seamless. Miro is there whenever and wherever inspiration strikes to keep things moving. Interactive features help your team work as one with timers, sticky notes, voting, and of course, these guys. And the finishing touch? You can integrate the tools you're already using, making your Miro board the center of the universe. Join the millions of teams already on Miro and connect and collaborate in a new way. Sign up for free today.
Let's go. Ride the train you came in on, it's all good.
When did you cross over where like you realized all of a sudden you were famous?
Dude, like Michael Jackson can get your phone number. Just know that.
He literally just called you out of the blue. Now, were you funny growing up?
We called it the Jonesen, right? People feel like they know me already and I use that as a tool.
Were you ever totally bombed?
I had a night at a show where it was so bad. I offered people their money back. Steve walked in there and cussed them out. And I mean, they laughed so hard, Carlos.
Hey, family, welcome to the show. Hey, listen, if you're in a laughing mood today, we have a terrific one for you. One of the original kings of comedy is here to bring the house down. That's right, Cedric the Entertainer is here. Also coming up, I'm gonna introduce you to Bandy Price. Now, she's the co-founder and CEO of Canary's and a member of Hennessy's Never Stop, Never Settle Society. More on that in a bit, you're gonna love meeting her. But first, my main man Cedric the Entertainer. He's turned his love of comedy into one hell of a career, killed it on stages all over the world. And in fact, he's used that exposure and talent to build himself an incredible film and television resume. Of course, I'm talking about projects like The Steve Harvey Show, Barbershop, The Soul Man, and his latest, the hit CBS sitcom, The Neighborhood. For more, this is your 2021 Emmy host, Cedric the Entertainer. Hey Cedric.
What's up, my brother, how you doing?
Hey, man, you're looking young.
Yeah, man, you know what I'm saying? I got a few little injections.
Okay, alright, you're not afraid. Hollywood is treating you right, I love it. Hey, you know what? Don't laugh because a couple of us are starting to get them.
You recognize it, like, you know, age is real, but you know, normally black don't crack. It's been showing some fault lines lately.
That is a good way to say it. What did you do for the summer?
Man, I was trying to create and produce other shows. We had, you know, the success of the show coming out on bounce and then then I produced a little summertime show that I did for myself. Of course, CBS, the greatest at home videos. And so, we did, we did some more of those this summer. Right now, we're all about that joy, that aspiration, that motivating factor to say, hey, life is worth living, get up and go for it. And you just don't wanna miss what the human spirit has the ability to do. We got it right here on this show.
Am I projecting? Or are you someone who likes to stay busy?
I would say it's a little bit of the Midwest upbringing. And I lived in a single-parent household. My mom was a schoolteacher and it was, and it was my younger sister. And so, as the male, you know, I felt like it was kinda like instilled to be active, to be a, be a participant. So, I even look at my job even like that to this day, you know? Even though it comes with celebrity and recognition, I really look at it like a guy who's getting up to go to work. I don't really like, oh, I'm famous, you know? So, people like, yo, man, are you so humble all the time, so chill? I'm like, dude, I've just got a job, that's the way I live it.
When did you cross over where like you realized all of a sudden you were famous?
A couple of times. One, I won a comedy competition in Chicago and they put me in Jet magazine, bro.
Okay, I remember Jet.
Come on now.
Yep, yep.
Now, you don't, I don't know what people need as far as fame, but cause being in Jet in the hood was like a whole situation. And then the next time that I really felt like really famous was after the Bud Light commercials I did in the Super Bowl. Got too low for that five.
With a great taste that won't fill you up and never lets you down, make it a Bud Light.
That's, that's not that bad. I've been on television, I've done movies, but you don't realize how much impact a commercial is basically on 10 times, 12 times in a day. So, your opportunity for exposure is crazy. So, it was like people send me in the airports and stopping me. And I was like, yo, I'm out here now, that's crazy.
What's the best thing that's ever happened as a result of being famous?
One, Michael Jackson called me at my house one day. I don't know how he had my number or nothing, but I was sitting at home, I'd just had my son, who's about to be 21 now, so I was holding him like a baby. And I get a call and it was like Cedric the Entertainer? And I was like, yes. And he was like, you have a call from Michael Jackson. And I was like, what? And I figured it's a joke. And then he was like, hey, man, how you doing? I was like, yo, that's crazy.
He literally just called you out of the blue.
Dude, like Michael Jackson can get your phone number. Just know that. He liked the movie Johnson Family Vacation and wanted to tell me to keep, you know, keep that kinda comedy up. He was, you know, being from Indiana, that all made sense. That traveling with your family to go visit family. So, he loved that, that movie. That was, that was one of those moments I say come with being famous.
Give me another one, what else, what else came with being famous?
We were shooting The Steve Harvey Show and Halle Berry's dressing room was across the hall from mine. She was getting ready to go do something, some other show. And she come, she was coming out the door to go to the set and I stopped her. And I said, how you doing? And I said, look at me just for a second. Do you feel anything? I mean, Carlos, I'm talking about, dude, I remind you of a cousin. I don't care, whatever it is, I'm using that to get in. I don't need it to be nothing special, but do you feel anything as you look at me?
You know what? I have not been that creative, I need to be more creative. You just expanded my catalog.
Everybody going for the romance. I'm dealing with whatever emotion comes out first. I'm willing to take the long road, is what I'm saying.
Oh, man, oh, I love that.
Our home is the training ground for her dreams policy. Ensure carefully, dream fearlessly.
Thing about my son, he like the little mixed girls. He like the girls that's like half-black, half-white, little curly hair, that's his thing, you know? And he gonna go out on date, you know, he gonna tell me, take them to the movies. You know, I'm like, cool. Next, you know, he hop in the backseat with her, I'm like, I'm like, when the hell I turn into an Uber driver, goddamn? I'm sick of damn entertainers, somebody better get up here with me, goddamn.
How did you get into comedy in the first place? Because that wasn't your first job, was it?
I had many jobs, you know? I went to college, graduated Southeast Missouri State and I had Cape Girardeau. And, you know, I worked in radio for a minute. I sold fax machines for the Rico Corporation for a minute. You know, when they were new, that was a new technology. I was, I was considered selling spaceships at the time. Like, what are you, what are you talking about? And then was working at State Farm and, you know, basically transitioning to comedy at night, like most people, trying to just find your, find your way in life, young man. The first time I ever did comedy, you know, another comedian basically worked me through my set, told me how to do it, basically taught me how to be a professional. And then I won $500 the first time I ever did it, so I was hooked.
You know how white people are when they try to get you to feel comfortable, man? He saying all the wrong stuff, talking about, you know what, Shader? I like black people. Hell, I got a pair of black boots. I got a black pickup truck. I even got a colored TV.
Now, were you funny growing up?
Well, we used to call it, St. Louis, we called it the Jonesen, Jonesen, right? Like, you gotta be Jonesen. So, in, you know, in the lunchroom, we had three lunches. You had first lunch, second lunch, third lunch. I was on third lunch, but the kids from first lunch would be like, yo, like come trying to get me out of class. They'd be like, yo, man, you gotta come down here, get old boy today, man, he been killing us.
Now, did they call you the Entertainer back then or no?
Hollywood, I had relatives out here as a kid, so we would come and visit. And I had a shirt, a T-shirt that said Hollywood on it that obviously now in retrospect, I must have worn it quite a bit.
Right.
Because it became, it became my nickname. All, all even to the point that my kids and peers would call my mom Miss Wood. They didn't even know my name. I was really like Hollywood. People were like, come on, be like, how you doing, Miss Wood? See, like, who are they talking about?
Now, how did it switch to Cedric the Entertainer?
Well, that name kinda came about as I started to really, you know, do comedy more professionally. I was doing a show one night and the guy was introducing everybody as the next comedian. And I was like, I just wasn't comfortable with being considered a comedian. I told him to call me an entertainer. He introduced me as Cedric the Entertainer. I went up, I had a great show. And then when I came off, he called me Cedric the Entertainer again. So, I just kept, I've been asked throughout my career, you know, especially early on, to change it. You know, everybody thought like it was too big of a name to take on. You know, definitely had agents, you know, that would be like, no, nobody's doing like the big names anymore. Everybody's going by their, their real family surnames. But, you know, for me, it was, you know, it wasn't even a name I gave myself. You know, I embraced it for that reason, like, nah, I'm this guy when I'm doing those jokes.
White people like space movies, black people don't really do space like that. White people love space movies, they love movies about the moon and Mars, where they can be leaving our ass down here on Earth. That's what they think, they think they gonna leave us down here on Earth. They gonna move to the moon. Ain't gonna happen. Y'all move to the moon, damn it, we coming to the moon.
So, what would have happened Cedric if you hadn't made it, do you think?
Yeah, I was working at State Farm, but I always, even then, I had an entrepreneurial kinda spirit. Like, I always found little hustles and, you know, kinda business ideas. So, I think I would have, you know, maybe found my way into some kind of business. Probably maybe would have found my way back into the, you know, the news area or something like that, or sports announcing, I don't know. But I, you know, I, I studied that kinda stuff in college and had, and had an opportunity to work for a CBS affiliate when I first graduated, doing like fun news, maybe over that Kevin Frazier job.
Most interesting thing you've learned about dreaming fearlessly? Because so many people, Cedric, you know, want to dream fearlessly. It's hard, it's difficult, people are scared to do it, especially in this world. What have you learned? What would you tell a younger version of yourself about how to dream fearlessly and bring it alive?
Well, I think like the thing about dreaming fearlessly is really trusting that is that don't doubt yourself from trying. Like, don't stop yourself from what you believe is going to happen. Let the chips fall where they may. Your best opportunity is really gonna come by being in the situation and getting out there. And that was one, you know, like for me, growing up in a single-parent household, I was doing really well. I was making good money for a young guy, I was probably 26, 27, making nice money. I got a house, I got a car. But for me to say, like, I believe in comedy, I just came up with a plan. I saved up enough money and I had a strategy to do some shows. And then I had a quit date and I did it. And I just, I quit on that date.
My son, 15, he been, he on the swim team. So, you know, that swim, they be getting you in a different kinda shape. So, he all of a sudden, my son out of nowhere, got all shoulders and chest. He come walking in the house one day, what up dad? I said, oh, no, you might as well put all that up when you walk in the house. Put them shoulders in the closet, put your chest in the drawer. I ain't gonna have all this walk around my goddamn house.
Hey, hey, look back for me, I don't know if I fully know how you broke through and how you think about why you broke through.
My style was very relational. Like, I felt like talking to a cousin or looking at an uncle or, you know, it, I perform like that where it doesn't feel like, oh, somebody's walking up kinda just telling you these jokes. And I really emulated my style from the late Robin Harris.
Oh, man, I loved him.
He was the kinda comedian that when I first saw him and I identified with him, the right television came at the right time for me, like, you know? And so many of my peers, I would say, we landed in that space where all the guys from my class of comedy, uh, uh, most of us are still around and still doing well. D L, C, Jamie, Chris Rock was a little bit ahead of us. But, uh, but all of us that kinda came in that, that era where Def Jam was hot, Comic View for me was the one on BET. I made the, you know, the choice to go to Comic View and it made me a household name because I was the host. And when I became the host, you know, like in the African-American households, I was known and that made me a star. And then The Steve Harvey Show and then the movies. But, uh, all of it really, really kinda stems from the idea that I think that people feel like they know me already and I use that as a tool.
Who's in your comedy Mount Rushmore?
Robin Harris, Eddie Murphy, Richard Pryor, George Carlin, love Robin Williams as well, Richard Gere. He was a favorite comedian of mine growing up, so I would throw him up there somewhere.
Now, have you ever melted down on stage? Have you ever totally bombed?
Oh, a couple of times, man. I remember having a night in St. Louis where, when I, you know, I was popping, man. Everybody was coming to see me, I was going, I was getting it in. And I had a night at a show where it was so bad. I offered people their money back. I was just feeling bad for myself, not expecting people to really want their money back.
They want their money back, I love that.
I was like, oh, for real? Steve, you know, taught me one time, just totally be yourself, man. As much as you wanna make them laugh, if they're not laughing and you having a good time, then just rock it that way and don't even worry about it. You know, so I've learned to do those kinda, you know, those kinda things on stage to help me like whenever, you know, whenever you feel like it's going down a horrible rabbit hole to nowhere.
But you know, it is, uh, it is such an opportunity in this life to take the stage as many times as someone like you or Steve does. And to have people paying attention to you, enjoying you, paying their money, looking forward to it. And in a way, when I think about you guys up there, it's also such a responsibility too. Because, you know, we're showing up, hoping that you're gonna make us feel better.
Yeah, I mean, you know, and that's the thing that I think that I always tell young comedians is that you gotta remember that people come here and they pay, they paid their money, they've had all kinds of experiences today. You know, your job is to go up there and entertain them, you know? Go in there and try to embrace that, be your greatest self and see if you can transfer that to them to just get people to transform from, from where they really are in life to this space that's about laughter and joy and a good time. And that's what I believe, you know, what the comedian is supposed to do.
There are so white people that love black people just because they're black. Makes them feel all good on the inside.
Hey, I have lots of black friends. I'm a good person. Oh, my God, don't you just love Hamilton? Tell me how you feel about Hamilton.
What's the greatest musical of all time?
Oh, my God.
Hey, what about Neighborhood, how's that been?
We're going into the fourth season. Really great to have this show, man. The whole gentrification thing is very real in our communities. And so, we wanted to be able to tell the story from, you know, what that feels like, that the world is becoming this melting pot, that people are, you know, more and more, you know, living next to each other and side by side. And, you know, that's what, you know, a cohesive world should operate as, you know, that we should be able to learn from and grow with and recognize the differences in each other and still be able to live side by side.
Now, as much as you enjoy it as a comedy, you guys tackle some very, as you said, like serious, cutting-edge issues. Has working on the show changed your mind about anything? Or sort of did it offer you new perspectives on anything?
I mean, you know, being, being a guy over 50, I've seen so many things in this world. Like, you know, we, we attacked the, uh- Like, you know, we attacked the social injustice, you know, in our first episode last season. That got us a lot of acclaim.
I'm gonna organize a protest. They want you to fight with this, but you gotta fight with this. Where's Malcolm? I thought he was with you. I'm going back out there. I'm going with you. I don't need anybody else I love out there. Come on, Dave.
You know, the main thing is you learn from my white counterparts kind of perspective and then be able to educate. And I think in these close quarters like this, you're able to give far more education, you know? You know, like even to the point that, you know, I remember there was a whole thing in that episode about using the term allies. And they wanted to lock on us and look, we not doing that. We not doing these lock on terms that kind of justifies or wipes over, you know, all these years of social injustice by saying, just because I stand here now, I'm considered an ally and that gives me this pass.
I'm sorry if I seem racist. Hey, hey, man, I'm sorry if I seem racist.
I was like, those are the kind of terms that I believe, you know, how we let people off the hook. We need to really deal with this. We need to really know like, how did that make you feel that I had the power to tell you no? Did that make you feel something?
I tell y'all, starting one down the street, I see this lady, a little white lady gonna come up to me like, oh my God, I can't believe it's you. You got a little daughter with her. She was like, can we take a picture with you? I'm like, of course, you know? Cause I'll take the picture with her. I'm about to leave, I don't walk off. She like, thank you, CeeLo.
What happens when you are in front of all white audiences? Is that a different comedy set and a different relationship for you than when you're in front of mixed audiences?
You know, that's one of the first times that I bombed, that I really recall was me trying to change my set for an all white audience. And I bombed because I went up there and I, you know, I basically got outside my authentic selves and was trying to do what I thought they would like or would relate to. And so, uh, and I remember that I bombed and Steve walked up there and cussed them out. And I mean, they laughed so hard, Carlos.
Yeah.
They was laughing at him going off on them. It was like, wow. From that moment on, I recognized like, yo, this is all you gotta do in life. Just don't even worry about it. Just ride, ride the train you came here on. It's all good. They don't like that one, then they just don't like it. But don't, don't try to make them like you. That's what I identified with my character in Barbershop. And a lot of people, you know, I gotta add some controversial about it, uh, but what I was tapping into as a, you know, as an actor was that this guy was old enough not to really worry about your opinion about his opinion. Like he didn't care about what you thought about his opinion. And so therefore he could say what he wanted, like, and I love that.
You wrong, you wrong, man. Stop this time, pal. I ain't with you. I'll tell you one thing, you better never let Jesse Jackson in. You talking about, like, man, this is just. Jesse, Randy, Tito, Freddie, action. I'll take him on, Jack. Man, I love this place.
Biggest mistake or biggest failure you've had in this life?
Somebody worded this perfectly. I, I gave up for what I wanted in the long run to get what I wanted right now. And that's, that would be one of those things. I had a plan and I knew that I had this plan and I pivoted on that plan because I accepted what I could get right now. And then that's one of those things that you always go back and you're like, man, if I just would have did it my way, I'd have been way further.
And so you're saying you, there was a movie or something that you took in the short term instead of maybe a series or a different project that you really wanted?
Movie was The Honeymooners. And The Honeymooners did great, but the movie that I wanted to do would have been a franchise. I know it and the director I wanted and everything, we would have had a big, big, big movie career.
Most beautiful place you've ever been to?
Oh, man, um, Australia, Queensland, the surfers paradise over there.
Ooh, that sounds beautiful. I've been to Australia, but only to Sydney and Melbourne.
Yeah, you gotta go to their Miami version. It's really pretty over there.
And are you an Airbnb guy or are you a hotel guy?
If I got the whole family going with me, we gonna get a house and rent a house. We travel pretty heavy and, you know, so that it's better for us to like have a house and just operate from there.
Hey, I want to hit you with a little bit of rapid fire.
Let's go.
All right. I say Obama, you say what?
Coolest ever.
I say Cleveland, you say what?
Steve Harvey.
I say greatest athlete of all time, you say?
Jordan.
Most interesting book you've ever read?
Monster Cody.
The thing you're most excited about hosting the Emmys?
Mainly, you know, the celebratory energy of the night, man. Like I feel like television has got us through. It's gonna be so many wonderful stars out. I just really look forward to giving that vibration off is this idea that we're gonna be here, um, really, you know, commending each other and laughing and patting each other on the back for the work that was done.
If you could have dinner with anybody, dead or alive, who would you have dinner with?
Vernon Jordan. Love, love the swagger of Frederick Douglass. And then not a real person, but Nucky Thompson from Boardwalk Empire.
I like all three of those. Vernon Jordan, he would send me notes sometimes, uh, when I was on the air. He said, don't wear that shirt again. He said, that was a one time shirt. Hey, Cedric, man, I so appreciate you and I really appreciate you stopping by.
Yeah, same here, man. Definitely enjoyed this, man. Super cool dude.
Monica, what'd you think?
Cedric is the guy. I mean, who doesn't love Cedric? Always funny. His line about, um, Halle Berry?
Really?
I had a hard time holding it in. I thought that was so funny. Like, who didn't love Halle Berry? I mean, he says just anything, everything. Like, it's like, Cedric is so funny. Also, he was exactly what I expected him to be. I enjoyed every moment and I wish you guys could have went longer.
I was just saying to my cousins that we were gonna have him on the show today. And, uh, one of my cousins pointed out, he's the reason why our family has laugh wrinkles. But then he was talking about how he, he got a chest injury on the fault line.
I found this fascinating conversation, the more fascinating once you guys started talking about race and how hard it is for us to prove that we've always been allies, that we grew up without racism, without seeing color, like we kind of did what we could at the time, but that's not enough. I found this conversation amazing, not because he's this entertainer. I found this conversation amazing because he has a lot to say about a topic that we all really need to be talking about.
Hey, I hope you enjoyed Cedric the Entertainer. How could you not laugh? How could you not enjoy him? Such a good guy, such a relatable guy. Loved what he had to say about The Honeymooners, trusting your gut, never knowing where that could end up. All kinds of goodness there. Hope you enjoyed him as well. Listen, now as I promised, it's time to introduce you to yet another incredible person. And by the way, an equally incredible program, it's put on by our friends at Hennessy, it's called the Never Stop, Never Settle Society, recognizes strivers and dreamers who are creating change in the face of diversity. Now, today we're gonna shine a light on Mandy Price. She's the co-founder and CEO of Canaries, a company that uses technology and data to improve diversity and inclusion in the workplace. Really incredible company. For more, here's my time with Mandy Price. Hey, Mandy.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how you doing?
Good.
What made you decide to apply to the Never Stop, Never Settle Society?
So one of our teammates saw the application and we were just really, really inspired by Hennessy's commitment to closing the gap for black entrepreneurs and for addressing a lot of disparities that we see within our society. So we were honored to be one of the recipients and really, really thankful for the commitment that they're showing towards, uh, black entrepreneurs.
Mandy, take me back. Were you slated to be an entrepreneur, uh, from early on?
I never thought I'd be an entrepreneur, but like most entrepreneurs, I was driven by my passion. So when I was practicing law, I was on the Texas Rights Board and did many, many things with respect to promoting social justice issues. And over time, you know, I faced many, many challenges that many women and people of color, especially black professionals face in the workplace. And, you know, I kind of grew up in a lot of programs that teach you how to navigate the workplace. I felt like what we were doing a lot of times was teaching people how to navigate a broken system, a system that we knew didn't work. And I felt that I don't want to teach these same skills to my children. I want the work environment to be fair for them, not for me to continue to teach them these survival skills that have been passed down from generation to generation. And so that's one of many lightbulb moments, but I think as I started to have my children, I just, I wanted the workplace to be different and I wanted it to be fair.
When did you start Canaries?
Yeah, we started it in 2018. I enjoy it because it's my life's passion and I feel like my purpose in life. Our company is focused on diversity, equity, inclusion issues. And so what we've seen, obviously within the last year and a half, right, is a fundamental shift when it comes to DEI. So for us, it is a very exciting time, especially when we think about the way we approach DEI is really around helping organizations think about it from a systemic and institutional standpoint. And when we first started the company, we felt like we were speaking a different language than folks. We were talking about measuring equity inclusion and creating policies and practices to promote inclusion and equity. And people would tell us they had a pipeline problem. They were just, we're, you know, we just need to recruit. And we feel like people are finally speaking the same language as us.
Who have you found so far really seems to be locked in, really seems to be taking the opportunity seriously and really engaging with you guys in an ambitious way?
We see certain CEOs, certain boards, certain shareholders and investors that have made this a priority for their organizations. And that's really the kind of common thread that we're seeing. But one of the things that, you know, we kind of worked ourselves in a frenzy of thinking, this thing only lasts for six months or maybe a year. And we're still seeing companies focused on these issues and we're still seeing boards and shareholders ask about them. And we're still seeing regulations come down, right? SEC has all these different rules and companies like NASDAQ and Goldman Sachs saying, we're not gonna take your company public if you don't have diversity on your board. NASDAQ saying, if you don't have a certain level of diversity, you can't be listed on our exchange. So we are seeing all the things that are pointing to, this isn't a blip, that this is longstanding and it's gonna be something that organizations have to pay attention to.
And if everything goes well, 10 years from now, what will be true about Canaries? Paint me a vision.
Well, we know DI issues aren't just US issues, they're global issues. And so 10 years from now, we hope to be working with many, many companies across the globe to help ensure that they are creating that inclusive and equitable environment for all their employees and that DEI is truly elevated with every other business priority where the idea of measuring and tracking it over multi-years isn't a foreign concept. And so that's our goal, to really ensure that this work continues. Like you said, it's not that blip, but 10 years from now, this will be a no brainer for companies.
Hey, man, I hope, I hope, I hope that happens. Mandy, it was very nice to meet you. Thank you for the work that you're doing and congratulations.
Thank you so much, Carlos.
Hey, it was Mandy Price. My thanks to her and everyone at Hennessy and the Never Stop, Never Settle Society. Hey, while we're saying our thanks, I want to thank all of you for tuning in. We'll see you next time right here on The Carlos Watson Show. Hey, tune into The Carlos Watson Show. It's like no other. You're gonna enjoy it every weekday on YouTube.
Who's your best friend? Who's your best friend? Who's your best friend? Abby, who's your best friend? Oh, good girls. Go down there. There he goes.
George, is that funny?
Leave it.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. We have a, we have a protocol, you know, anytime that there's a COVID case, Jason Torrisi, our facilities director, is alerted and his, his crew have a, they do, so specifically third wave, they're gonna go in there and use all the spray and the black, it's all the side done. It doesn't require a paid day. You not spray works really well, you know, and it's spray all the tables and desks and chairs and all of the touch points and everything.
Oh, come here, come here, little ostrich. Come here, I'll grab it, come here. Oh, God. Daddy, what do we do?
I think it's a good idea and maybe we could do it around the end of first term when there's open house, uh, around grading time. I know that there are benchmark times when people have, for receiving new school.
In the stirrup. Put it in there.
Question, so at that time it was going back to school? Is that how it was phrased?
All right, that was good.
It was in the summer, right? So how would we, I just want to, we'd have to think through how we, it's a different question.
Hey, Jackie, can I go and patch you?
So you probably were on a patch.
I think that's a pretty good point. And I know people are passionate about it and it's heavily debated. We're fighting this as long as everybody else this year is fighting it. You know, last year, everybody rallied first, you know, some of them said, well, we all rallied to peak sports and music and the arts and tech, all your technology needs. We all came together for another cause and I believe we can do it again. I think that we just, there are so many unknowns and there are so many studies on both sides that if we have our own data, you know, we can add it to the puzzle.
Staring at an adorable, pint-sized, four-legged ruminant chewing its cud.
Always time to shut the door.
It's okay. Mooch, what are you doing? I'm gonna need you to not take my food. Mooch, no!
Sixteenth? Do we move on to new business resolution? Yeah. It's the first item.
Why get you a clip? Why I get you? Is it good?
Yes, number, it's A.
Thank you.
Well done, dog.
You're wearing a nice, cool shirt. We're gonna go to Mr. Miller's later. Charlie, what are you doing?
Do you mind if I rest my chin on your butt?
Who's your daddy?
Shala.
Who's your daddy?
To follow along with the schedule that we did last year.
Share about your costume. Oh, look at the costume.
The recommendation for the requirement.
Show on the costume. Look at you.
Tom, look, he's going at it. Oh, my God.
Being winter, it's nice to have more time to face a snowstorm or something. So, what we would recommend is that we do it on the fifth, and then the snow day typically here is on the following Monday, the seventh. That's my recommendation.
Daniel! Chubs, that slippery dude.
We'll find out.
I'll save the bags.
Save the bags, good idea.
Oh, my gosh! These are so cute!
I had a question relative to, I think it's always good to review this. Sure.
I'm kidding. I am telling you.
I think it's always good to just.
This is hilariously funny.
Periodically.
This is Casey, the bear dragon, standing on his hind feet, holding his belt.
It's on page two, at least the way I printed it out at the top, where it says, "Recognize that no individual member has authority to speak on, to speak or act to the entire board except as specifically designated to use by board action." And under that, it says, "Recognize that final board action shall be supported by all members of the board, take no private action that shall compromise the board or administration, and refrain from private action," which undermine or compromise official board actions.
You can't go in the fridge anymore. No! You can't do it.
Private or public boards or committees that I've ever been on, that just kind of underscores what I'm typically been used to. So, for example, I would like to bring up for discussion, like posting information.
Karma, what is that? No, you don't eat him. He said no.
Can you cite me the RSA that mandates that the board has to no longer be able to have a personal opinion? And how that does not violate that person's right of free speech if they make the comment? I mean, we all know what you're talking about, Tom.
He's so mad at you.
And I have been very clear, that when the board makes a decision, it is the board's decision, and it is the policy. But that does not mean that I have to embrace it and push it if I don't agree with it. So, you can be assured, if I vote no on an item, I'm not going to change my mind because the board in total voted in a majority the other way. It's a violation of freedom of speech. So, I will post my opinion, and I've been very careful to say that it's not.
What's next to it? Action! Good girl, Sadie! Go get your pants!
I would have signed it. So, when I say something personally, it is my personal view. So, you know, if you want to try to take some action to get me?
She is for real.
I, I don't think it's a question of wanting to take action. I hope it's not. We're having a discussion about policies, BDFE.
It got covered! It's covered! You have to play with the rules when it gets covered, it stays.
That's only you and you in compliance with the policy, so I imagine that's why you're bringing it up.
What did daddy do to you?
It's very straightforward.
What did daddy do?
What other policies are we not responsible for following by our personal choice about our feelings, which we want to express? Any and all of them, why do we have them? I guess would be my question.
Don't get up now.
For example.
Oh, push it closer. That's better.
...being placed in a position of conflict of interest, and refrain from using my board positions for personal or party reasons. Is there an RSA that says that you can't have a relative employed by the school district and serve on the board? Isn't it a conflict of interest if you have a child in the school district because you have a special interest in what your school board does because you have a child? I mean, when we look at that, do you like the answer to that? Yeah.
Get out of there! Get it!
So, the response that I got didn't, again, it begs me to read the same statement again. There's a difference between pushing something and embracing it versus going with a decision and making a decision.
Stella!
There's no private action that will compromise the board or administration, and refrain from private action that undermines official board actions. In my opinion, what you did does that, and I don't see how that, and if it doesn't, then that's a whole nother discussion. So, my main point in bringing this up is that we can't be doing this as a board. This is not an effective way to run a committee, a board, etc. People are gonna, we're gonna vote on something, and then individually, we could all go out and start telling our own stories, and we are a board member when we're doing that.
Long, little man!
Joe, buddy.
But they haven't worn them all along.
Oh, my God. I think they like me. You think so? I think so.
To have a medical reason, to me, at the last meeting, I had a medical reason that I could not wear one. I've worn them all the time, but to condemn somebody that they're being disrespectful when they have a medical reason?
We want to talk about our constituency. That was voted on at the deliberative meeting by numbers roughly 290 to 10, when the question was asked if anybody that wasn't wearing a mask.
Tanner, take Polly for a walk.
To understand where our constituency, who we represent.
I think the numbers are changed.
Move it around a little.
Can I make one suggestion?
Are you stuck, Sadie?
Last time, when I was the representative on this, we took a vote what our position was, and then they did a reversal. We voted to support what the school association supported or didn't support, and then that got flipped. And then it was like, well, now I don't know how my board wants me to vote, so maybe we have a fallback if this happens, then do this.
They're looking at me.
Association's recommendation, and if it changes at the meeting because of something, then to me, that would be following what our recommendation would be. We'd have that kind of show, that might work. Because I think last time, we voted like yes, no, whether to support or not, versus staying in a way that like, we support student associations.
Get it, get it!
This would be very helpful for me, me being our representative.
He's trying to brush it for me with his teeth. Dude! Dude, dude!
Oscar, are you hungry? Are you hungry? You hungry? Okay, good boy. Let's have some lunch.
This is what happens when we give Redman a graham cracker, and he tries to share it with the doggy, but the doggy takes the whole thing.
What have you got? What is it, Gash?
I'm moved that we accept the recommendation of the Director of Special Education. The higher power professionals necessary for the new students.
Roto! Roto!
All of the members say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Resentment? Next, what are the comments? A member of the audience asked earlier about critical race theory. There are three resolutions that we're gonna be voting on.
Mommy just spent twelve and a half hours on her feet.
So, they should be aware of that.
Six months pregnant.
They're saying resolutions, a lot of them, they left, what are the resolutions? Three of them, GO with CRT, and one of them specifically.
Oh, my God!
I think violating state law, so the public should be aware that that might be contentious in the discussion on that resolution.
What's in your mouth, Maggie? She is so silly.
Just clarification, there's the five that aren't there also, the continuing resolutions that they take a vote on if they haven't passed three years in a row?
I don't know, I'd have to go back to that lady and re-read all of them again.
I, I think there are several.
Good boy, good girl. Get it! Get it! Get it, man!
Right, so we need to know whether we're going to continue to support those or not.
If you go to the New Hampshire School Board Association, they have one of the tabs, that's the link is.
What you want? Talk to me. Talk to me. Tell me. Talk to.
Talk to.
Nope, we're all caught up. We don't have any more.
He just stands there and lets him jump on him. He just don't care. You made him get the corner? Billy!
So actually, the New Hampshire legislator, um, last year, because of what happened with schools like ours and the free and reduced lunch forms and the reduction of adequacy, they passed a law. We even had that, and spoke about that at one of the meetings, that that was coming, and it finally happened, you know, last spring in the team. So we should be good with adequacy, you know, for this year.
Good girl! Hi, baby! Give me a kiss, give me a kiss.